Welcome everybody to the March 12th meeting of the Planning Commission. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could do roll call.
Commissioner Mariupatna is absent. Commissioner Mistri.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Vice Chair Linskog.
Here.
Chair Feng.
Here.
All present and one absence.
Great. For the first item on our agenda, it's approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I move to accept the motion, I mean, the minutes from the meeting of February 27th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion or corrections? Looks good. All right, if you could vote with your lights.
Passes unanimously with one absence.
Thank you. We have a couple other items here, postponements. Are there any postponements today?
No, there aren't, Chair.
All right. With that, we will proceed to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Do we have any cards?
We have no speakers, Chair.
All right, no speakers. So we close the oral communication part of the meeting.
Nobody on Zoom either, right?
Flipped away from that screen. Do we have any consent calendar items?
No consent calendar items, Chair.
All right. Then we will rapidly move to our public hearings. The first hearing today is, the subject is an amendment to a development agreement for the Cupertino Village Boutique Hotel project in associated environmental review. This is application number DA 2023002. Applicant is Kimco. With the name Sunil Plaha. The location is 10-801 and 10-805 North Wolf Road, APN 316-45017 and 316-05056. We will start actually by, if we could have a report on any communications, ex parte communications.
Yeah, I met with the representatives for Kimco on Saturday morning and had a good conversation about the project. And I also had a phone call with Claudio Bono, who's representative for the Dianza Hotel, which is a next agenda item, sorry.
I can go next. I had a Zoom call with Michael and Sunil from Kimco yesterday to discuss their project, but I did not meet with the Hotel Dianza project team.
Yeah, it's the next agenda.
So I had a phone call with the owner of Dianza Hotel, John Vidovic, and I made a call to Kimco too, but no one picked up the phone, so I did not have any contact with them.
And just to round things out, I did have a phone call with Kimco yesterday. Great. With that, I think we could go to the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission. I would like to introduce John Martier, you've met him before, Senior Planner. He will be doing the presentation for both the hotels tonight. And yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Pugh. Good evening. All right. So first of two development agreement amendments. This one is introduced by Chair Feng as DA 2023002. So quick background of the site and the prior approval. So we have the existing site owned by Kimco is adjacent to a mix of uses, particularly high-density housing, retail, as well as hotel uses and Apple Park to the east of the site along North Dianza, I'm sorry, North Wolf Road. The current site's 1.7 acres. It's occupied by two buildings, one at 10,000 square feet, which is an empty bank, and the second of the Duke of Edinburgh, which is approximately 3,000 square feet. On July 16, 2019, City Council approved a multitude of applications, including general plan amendment for a 185-room hotel. On August 20, 2019, City Council conducted a second reading to adopt a development agreement, DA 2017-01, ordinance number 19-2186, which became effective November 19, 2019, and commenced a five-year term, ends on, excuse me, this should be November 19, 2024. I apologize for that mistake. What this development agreement does is vest many things, including community benefits as promised by and agreed to upon between the city and the applicant. It also vests development standards as of the effective date. Things that aren't vested would include such things as building codes and health and safety codes that could apply at the time of building permit application and subsequent issuance. Going on to the meat of the matter is the community benefits. This was kind of the heart of the development agreement, as well as the general plan amendment authorization process and general plan amendment process. The first is the community amenity funding. In this case, the applicant had agreed to, the developer had agreed to $10,000 a room for a total of $1,000,000, $1,150,000 payable in $50,000 installments each year with the rest due upon permit issuance, in which they've made about $300,000 payments as of now. Transportation demand management program, as well as a transportation management, as well as membership into a transportation management association. Free shuttle service to airports and job centers for residents, as well as guests of the hotel, and free shuttle service, I say. Free meeting rooms for city functions uncapped, as long as certain thresholds are met in terms of when these rooms are reserved and whatnot. Reduced rates for guests coming for city business, as authorized by the city manager. Internships and preferential hiring, internships, unpaid internships for students through the high school systems of Cupertino, as well as Dianza College, and preferential hiring for Cupertino residents. And a minimum hotel standard, as indicated and judged by Smith Travel Rating System. All these, the applicant, each year would have to submit a form, submit a description of how they upheld onto these community benefits as well. The request, as submitted by the applicant, is to extend the term three years, which would be the, which would change the term of the agreement to the eighth anniversary of the effective date, which would go to November 19, 2027. A few other changes to the development agreement are described below, and I'll read these out to you. In the event the developer submits for building permit for the core and shell of the hotel within three years, the effective date of the First Amendment, which would be around, you know, the 2027. The term of the agreement is automatically extended for two additional years, for a total of five years until November 19, 2029. So there are certain amendments in this, which could actually extend it beyond eight years to 10 at the most. If certificate of occupancy for the project is issued within five years of the effective date of the First Amendment, so approximately around April, threw a date in there for the second reading of this ordinance. April 16, 2029, for example, the developer shall be relieved of his obligations to make further community amenity funding payments. So whatever they paid up until that date, the city would keep. Anything further payments, they would be relieved if they got certificate of occupancy for the project within five years of the effective date of the First Amendment. A proposed revisions to the amount of parking and/or parking layout are treated as administrative project amendment and not subject to amendment to this agreement. Currently, only minor modifications to the parking layout and the amount of parking are administrative. Anything that's not considered minor would have to go through Planning Commission, City Fireman assessment, the amendment to the original MND is, because the scope of the project really hasn't changed beyond these amendments, proposed amendments to the development agreement, we found that the project is still in conformance with the mitigated negative deck that was approved in 2019, as well as this is in conformance with Secret Guidelines Section 15162, which essentially states that there's no, no anticipation, because of the scope of the project hasn't changed, because of the amendments to the development agreement, there's no anticipation of any sequel issues or changes with the mitigated negative declaration. The recommended actions that staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a draft resolution recommended to City Council, one, find the extension of the development agreement consistent with the project's mitigated negative declaration, and approve the development agreement as amended. And that concludes, oh, next up, excuse me, as Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to City Council April 3, 2024, for a first reading, and a second reading is tentatively scheduled for April 16, 2024. And that concludes my presentation. Sure.
Chair Fummi.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that. No, the applicants are here for another presentation, if you'd like to see that.
Yes, and the applicants are welcome to make a presentation. You have up to eight minutes.
Thank you very much, and if Mr. Martier could put up our slides, that would be wonderful. Hello, Chair Feng, Vice Chair Linskog, members of the Cupertino Planning Commission, staff and assembled members of the public. Okay, let's jump into this. Just wanted to hit a few high points of the project, including some factoids about the hotel as proposed, just so that we're not asking the Commission to vote on something that you haven't had a formal presentation on. Mr. Martier, if you would mind changing the first slide? Okay. The staff covered the history of this project well. Don't want to revisit that, other than just to note that at every point here, the approvals for this project have been unanimous. We have bent over backwards and done our absolute best to come up with a project that would be, that would be so positive for the community and easy to approve. It's not by accident. It took a lot of commitment on our part and among our designers, and we've really tried to make a project that we can all feel really good about. As staff noted, the development agreement was signed in 2019, was good for five years. I also wanted to point out that Kimco, our company, has owned the Cupertino Village Shopping Center since 2005, so we've been part of this community for quite some time, and amazing how fast the years go. We've also invested in this shopping center. Before, we added the parking garage and the two newest retail buildings in the 24 to 2016 time period, and since then have redone our exterior courtyards and signage. Parts of the shopping center could use some enhancement, which we would look forward to doing in conjunction with or just after the hotel project. We've got great plans and aspirations for this shopping center and look to continue to invest in it. Next slide, please. Great. The idea here on this slide is just that the market still seems to be lacking in higher and higher level of service hotel rooms, specifically in Cupertino, but really throughout the corridor of Palo Alto down south through San Jose. Our location is an ideal location for a hotel. We always ask ourselves, what does the real estate want to be? And this particular lot desperately wants to be a hotel. In March 2020, four months after our development agreement was signed and recorded, we had at that point selected a hotel operator, our flag, as hotel folks like to say, and we had a fully negotiated contract with an architect to prepare the construction documents. COVID happened after that, at that point, and business travel has slowed down, slowed down immediately and hasn't come back to the pre-pandemic levels. We believe that the three to five years, depending on how we measure the length of this requested development agreement extension, will allow the rates and occupancy to climb and the cost increases that we continue to see on the construction side. We believe that it is, that we feel confident that we will be able to move forward with this project during this extended term, if we're fortunate enough to have it granted. Next slide, please. Just a couple of high points from the hotel, 185 keys, the guest parking is underground. The part of the requirement for the level of service that Mr. Martier mentioned is, as an upper upscale hotel, requires a three-meal restaurant in the hotel, which we think will be a wonderful complement to the many other restaurants and destinations at the shopping center. This will be integrated with the shopping center. We've got significant meeting space. We've got a rooftop lounge that we're excited about that is planned. The service areas of the hotel as designed are sensitive to the areas around it and are protected from view and thoughtfully designed. And we would also note that we took great care to activate the 100% of our frontage along North Wolf with active uses, and that was with extensive coordination and consultation with the city staff back in the day. Next slide, please. Just a couple of notes, just that if the Commission would go back in time, we were, the only reason we needed a general plan amendment in the first place was just for the capped number of hotel rooms. Otherwise, we took, again, great pains to conform to the zoning ordinance, the general plan, and every other restriction that we could find anywhere near Cupertino. No exceptions for height, setbacks, density, or any other development standards. In other words, we really did our best to try to make this as objectively in conformance as we could, to make it as uncontroversial and as straight down the middle of the fairway as possible. Next slide, please. Just a couple of really high points on this one. It's a hotel, so there's no school impacts. The city did the traffic study as part of the environmental investigation, and the traffic impacts, as discussed and disclosed back in 2019, absolutely minimal. The accessibility to Apple Park and the TDM measures further reduced our traffic impacts. TOT tax is important to every community. Certainly Cupertino is no exception to that. The city consultant's projection was a, what we believe is a very conservative, 1.2 to 1.8 million dollars of net benefit to the general fund, which we think is important. We'd also note that we were very, very sensitive to the issue of displacement, and there's only one business that would be directly impacted. When we were approved back five years ago, we had a signed lease to relocate that tenant. The tenant has since terminated that agreement, but we remain in touch with that tenant should their appetite to relocate within the shopping center change. Next slide, please. And then just to wrap this up, the staff, Mr. Martier, did note some of the high points in the community benefits. Again, we've tried very, very hard since the inception of this project to volunteer whatever we thought we could possibly volunteer. It's a bit of a daunting list, but we stick by our commitment and are not asking for any changes to this development agreement, with the exception of the expiration date, as staff noted. And then I think that's the last slide. If Mr. Martier, you could flip to the next one. Oh, just a couple of photos, just the, or images. That's the portico chair in the upper left, the front of the hotel, the rooftop lounge on the right, the front patio that spills onto, towards the sidewalk along North Wolf, and the aforementioned sidewalk along North Wolf. And I believe that's it, and I timed it perfectly. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Plaha. Sunil Plaha and I are both here and look forward to answering any questions from the Commission.
I'll get it one day. Thank you very much. We now can take questions from the Commissioners, both for the staff report and for the applicant's report.
So I have a question. Seems like the amenity funding is being reduced, so how much money is the city going to lose from that? You said there were no changes, so I'm confused.
That's, well, there's no changes if we take the entirety of the three years. I would defer to staff as to the mechanics of the development agreement. As staff noted in advance, we have already funded $300,000 of the $1.85 million. Their staff is, did put in an incentive to try to get this hotel built quickly, so let me defer to staff on the mechanics.
All right. So how much of the 1.85 million will we lose if they complete it in a timely manner?
So if they already paid three, you're supposed to submit within five, so 250, so it'd be 550, say, so 550, so 800,000 we will lose.
We'll lose 800,000, okay. Well, I'll ask you about the other hotel later.
Respectfully, Commissioner, and I just wanted to note, it wouldn't really be lost, it just wouldn't be funded, right? I mean, think of all of the TOT tax that would be generated, but you make a fair point. We don't, we can see that point.
Well, I mean, the issue with TOT tax being generated, the more hotels you have, the lower the per-night rate, and so it's not like every additional hotel room is all TOT tax for Cupertino. It's going to drive down the rates of the other hotels, which will lower that TOT tax, you know, unless all the, unless all the guests come from San Jose or Sunnyvale or wherever. So, yeah, I was more interested in how much of the community amenity funding that we negotiated when I was on City Council that we will lose, you know, especially given the city's financial situation now that we did not have back when the hotel was approved.
Sorry, can we clarify that again? It was 1.85 from the big, at the onset of the agreement.
Correct.
300,000 has been paid thus far, and if this goes for another five years before they get their certificate of occupancy, that would be another 250,000, right? So that's 550,000 out of 1.85, so that's actually 1,325,000, right?
Your math is correct, sorry.
Well, in the original, you were off $5 million, that's why it's a concern.
He should be the county major, believe it or not, so.
In the original agreement, was the intention that by the time the construction had happened and they got their occupancy certificate, that the entire 1.85 would have been paid out?
Correct, correct.
Okay, understood.
Can I make one other comment on this matter? And certainly understand the issue and appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner Sharp. I would also note that the other hotel that is up for the same extension with the same development agreement came back through the GPA process and negotiated a lower fee, and that fee was about a third on a per-room basis, and just coincidentally, it certainly wasn't engineered this way, coincidentally, that if we were to build and to meet the incentive to try to get the hotel built per the terms of the development agreement, we would still have a comparable fee per room that the City Council approved for the very similar project. Your point is certainly well-taken. The idea, as I understand it, was to try to create an incentive, just because it's so hard and construction costs are, have been so out of control for so many years, it's daunting to try to get a project like this under construction, but we, of course, are, you know, defer to the Commission as to your recommendation.
So how much will this hotel cost to construct?
Quite a lot. I mean, at this point.
No, I'm just trying to see what a percentage this 1.325 million is of the hotel. I suspect it's pretty low, but.
Well, I mean, construction cost will be well over $100 million is our expectation.
Okay, so this is like 1.3%, okay. Okay. Who came up with this idea to cut the amenity fees? Was this the city, or was this the hotel, or what?
It was, you know, the city in negotiations with the applicant, so the city, you know, found it to be beneficial to have something like this built. I mean, besides TOT, we're looking at increasing property tax, sales tax, other types of taxes on top of that, plus, you know, if we look at just a BMR funding as well, just through mitigation fees, we're looking at $2 million with this hotel alone in BMR funds. So it's, I mean, there's a lot more on top of the 1.7 million in TOT, anticipated TOT.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
None for me.
My only comment is, I would like to ask if the developer, if you guys would be open to voluntarily agreeing to conform to the dark skies and bird-safe ordinance that was passed after you got your development agreement.
Thank you, Vice Chair Linskog. It's, we will certainly, we want to build a hotel that will be bird-safe. We applaud the city of Cupertino for its adoption of the, you know, of the ordinance. Our preference would be not to have an additional condition of approval related to it. However, we are absolutely willing to study the bird safety issue and to make mitigation. So it's certainly our intention to do that. I would also note that our expectation is that this building will be built as a lead gold building. I don't recall offhand whether issues like bird safety contribute points, but our point is that our, that we are absolutely committed to an environmentally sustainable building, and so, yes, our intention is to meet the intent and the letter of it. It's just where we get nervous about adding a whole bunch of conditions of approval, when our intention here is to simply extend the date of the agreement. So, but we're certainly open to reviewing that issue with staff, and certainly we applaud and support the intent and want to be good citizens as we're building this building that we think will be great for the community.
I don't have any comments at this time, so I think we're going to go ahead and open the public comment. And we have, here at Community Hall, we do have one speaker card, that's Jennifer Griffin. Welcome. We also have, looks like, two, four speakers on the, two. Yes, oh, yes.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I have followed this hotel from the beginning, all the way back, I remember, yeah, Kimco did buy in 2005 with Cupertino Village, Valco Village, and the progression of the hotel from 2014. I did meet with John this week to go over the plans for both hotels, because it had been a while, and I applaud Kimco. There was a lot of work from the public, the city, the elected leaders, to make sure that this project becomes a wonderful hotel for this part of Cupertino. Looking at the pictures of this, this hotel is every bit as much as any luxury hotel in Menlo Park near Stanford. I want that for my neighborhood. I want that for Cupertino. I want that to be across from Apple. This, Apple picked this location, Hewlett-Packard was there before. This is a very, very important location for Cupertino, and I applaud Kimco for coming up with a project that I am proud to have in Cupertino. Cupertino deserves this level. Cupertino deserves this level. I think that this hotel represents the highest efforts in thought. They took a lot of comments from the public at the time and came out with something that we should all be very proud of. We lobbied hard to keep the trees along Wolf Road, and they did. The Duke of Edinburgh is a very, very important part of Cupertino at that point. It was also very important to members of Hewlett-Packard that lived, that were across the street, Apple, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I understand that the Duke may think about retiring, but I hope that they keep the legacy going. My husband's stepbrothers come back into town and go to the Duke of Edinburgh, and they live in other states. So I want to commend Kimco for taking a giant step forward and producing something that Cupertino will be proud of. I do hope that this hotel will eventually be built. I understand the issues with the pandemic. We all went through this. I see that the electronics industry, et cetera, et cetera, is picking back up in Cupertino. Apple is busy. A lot of their workers have to come back to the site. And they are busy working two to three days a week there. So there is a need for this type of a hotel. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. If we could then go to the people who are online.
First speaker is Connie Cunningham.
Welcome, Connie.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Connie Cunningham. Good evening, Chair Fung and Vice Chair Lynn Scott and all the planning commissioners there this evening, plus the applicants and city staff and everyone. Just a second, let me close my door. So I wanted to say that I do find that this is an excellent hotel. And I wanted to thank Vice Chair Lynn Scott for bringing up the point about the Bird Safe and Dark Skies ordinance. I do have an important question. And I'm thinking, I thought it would be yes. When Vice Chair asked the question, I thought the answer was going to be yes. That they were following the Bird Safe and Dark Skies, especially since the hotel isn't started yet. So it seems to me there's still time to be thinking about how one can follow that ordinance and not be a difficulty in the pricing of it. There are many, many ways to meet the requirements of the Dark Skies ordinance. Excuse me. Studies have shown millions of birds die each year from colliding with glass. Millions more are harmed because their night migration is disrupted by city lights. Cupertino is located on the Pacific Flyway. Birds like the yellow-crowned sparrow migrate 3,000 miles to spend their winters here. It is very important for the public to know what the details of the project are that address the ordinance. This Cupertino Botique Hotel will be five stories tall with a rooftop lounge with a separate bar. Following the Cupertino ordinance will protect nighttime migrating birds and birds that will hit glass during the day. There are some simple things in that ordinance, like turning off the lights when people aren't there, 11 o'clock if nobody's there. And it's also got, you know, there's timers that you can use. And you don't use uplighting to go into the sky where the migrating birds are. You also don't have to use the most expensive Bird Safe design for glass. I would just simply urge your designers, if they have not already looked into it, to please look into that. It is so important. We led the, we led this area with that ordinance. And we would really like all of our hotels and places to follow it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie.
Next speaker is Lisa.
Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I appreciate also Commissioner Lynn Scott's question about Bird Safe, Dark Sky, because that was my question when I raised my hand. I heard the response to the Bird Safe, there was Mike, I didn't hear response to Dark Sky, but maybe you were just lumping them together. As they should be and as they should be followed, please, please, please. I would really be more comfortable if there were new conditional approval with that and not have Kimco try to avoid that. Another question, maybe staff can answer this online here. I don't believe that Kimco has gotten, has submitted their actual land plans. And my question is, not only the two ordinances that are so very important, will this need to be following the current building codes from here or beyond? Because we have a 50-acre property owner who is totally, totally taking advantage of the fact that they will not need to follow current building code, which is a travesty to our environment, hopes, everything else. And I'm just hoping Kimco is better than that. And I know they're better than that from the past history that I know of them. So can someone answer whether they're required to? And if they aren't required to, then, Mike, could you please address that as well? Thank you, and great job, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other speakers who raise their hand?
No other speakers, Chair.
All right. We're going to close the oral communication part of this item and bring it back up for deliberation and a motion. In either order.
Can you answer the question that Lisa had about the, you know, it is a concern because these projects that were approved years ago and have not been done now can get away with not complying with the latest building codes?
Yeah, so at least the member of the public, Lisa, is correct. You know, they haven't submitted for building permits yet. So the DA does vest development standards such as zoning, but does not vest building codes. So when they apply for building permits, they would have to submit to the most recent building codes.
And the Bird Safe and Dark Skies?
Unfortunately, the Bird Safe and Dark Skies is considered a zoning standard.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I don't really have a question. I just think that it would be good if we, if the applicants for both the hotels would accept a modification to the development agreement that would make them compliant with the Dark Skies and Bird Safe ordinance so that they are at parity with any other developer that, you know, files today. Because that, you know, that feels like the right thing to do.
Yeah, you know, I would say, willing to grant the concession on the payment for the amenities if they agreed to comply with Bird Safe and Dark Skies. But if they did not, do not agree, then they should not get a waiver of the amenity costs. Yeah, because I think it is, I think the Dark Skies and Bird Safe is important. And, you know, we're giving up over $1 million in revenue to the city with this potentially.
I think we can request the modification, a modification to the development agreement that says they, you know, we add an amendment that says they will be compliant with Dark Skies and Bird Safe. I don't know that...
Except that's a zoning change. I don't think we can do that here. Is that accurate?
I believe, and please jump in, Hugh, Michael, or anybody else. It's, the planning commission is the recommending body to council regarding this. You know, there's two parties to this agreement, the applicant and the city. And, you know, it's within the planning commission's discretion to add any type of condition on top of this as part of the amendment process. So if that is a concern, and you like to recommend that council takes that consideration.
So we're just doing a recommendation here?
Correct.
Right, so my recommendation would be that they can be relieved of the obligations to make further community amenity funding payments if they agree to comply with Bird Safe and Dark Skies. That would be my recommendation. And anyone else oppose, think it's a terrible idea or a great idea or stupid idea, whatever?
I'm probably opposed to changing zoning requirements as part of the development agreement. I do think, there's an interesting question here about, this was not noted in this, in the packet for this application, but in the other one, there is a comment about the greatly increased cost of building the project at this time. And I think that there's an interesting question here about, you know, the value to the city in the long term of recurring, having recurring TOT. So I think that, although, you know, so I guess my recommendation would be, my recommendation would be to say, I think that there's a chance here that the, there would be some reduction in the community amen, the amenities funding and that that would be something that would, you know, the applicant has heard, has heard what, you know, kind of the voice of the people who spoke here, that that would be something to consider in light of that. But I don't think I would make any requirement.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, it's, you know, also remember the value of the amenity money has gone way down because of inflation since that figure was agreed on five years ago.
My understanding is that our purview is to either advise to approve or decline that the city council, I don't understand if we actually have the authority to make any amendments to the agreement between the city and the applicant.
That's exactly what we're recommending for changes to the agreement.
But can staff opine on that?
Yeah, this commission has the discretion to make recommendations to modify their agreement.
Go ahead.
So from my perspective, I think tying the community benefits funding to incentivizing the developer to build faster, I think makes a lot of sense. I would leave that intact. I don't know that I would touch that. I think that makes sense because we want them to build as soon as possible, given the economic conditions, right? So I don't know that we need to mix the Bird Sky, Dark, I mean, Bird Safe and Dark Sky ordinance with that. So what I'm proposing is we leave that alone and then we just add that we recommend a modification, additional modification that the, to the development agreement, that the developer be compliant with Dark Skies, Bird Safe. I think to your point, which is a very, so I think, but to address your point, we definitely want to encourage building, right? I think we want to be as friendly as possible to getting this built because there is a huge economic benefit to the city. I've read the Dark Sky, Bird Safe ordinance. I don't think it adds too much of a burden when we're talking about, you know, the kind of cost that we're talking about. This is not even a rounding error. It's a very, very small ask. And it brings them to parity with other developments, which just seems like fair to any developer that applies today. So, and there's a reason we pass those ordinances, right? Because they're important to a lot of people in this, in this city. So that's why I would add that. If it wasn't a new burden, I wouldn't be pushing it. But it feels like a very minimal ask and in the interest of parity. So that's why I would recommend that.
I have one other question, the applicant. I recall that the applicant had asked permission to change the hotel to additional housing. Is that no longer part of your plan?
Thank you, Commissioner Scharf. No, I don't believe that is part of the plan. Other portions of the shopping center are included in the draft housing elements. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this lot was removed from the housing element consideration. So we have no plans to propose anything on this portion of the shopping center site other than the hotel.
All right, thank you.
If I could just add to that, yeah, the site immediately to the north, the shopping center, that is a housing element site. So that has been retained, but the hotel parcel is not part of the housing element at this time.
I mean, did I, do I misremember it that at one point they had asked the possibility of adding housing and removing the hotel?
I do not believe the applicant did, but it certainly could have been a comment at one of the public meetings that it be included.
Yeah, I think it was part of, in the draft, in the original, original one.
Early on, I believe it could have been.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right.
I was going to suggest, Chair, that it may be appropriate to invite a motion and do further discussion.
Yes, I was going to say, if there, if there, I mean, of course, after we get a motion, we are welcome to continue to discuss it, but if we could get a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the development agreement to be forwarded to council with the modification of an additional amendment asking the developer to be compliant with the Dark Skies and Bird Safe ordinance. Did I phrase that correctly?
I think that's close, well, it's fine. Yes.
Thank you.
I think there could be clarity, it's a recommendation to the council to approve with a modification to add Bird Safe, Dark Sky.
What he said.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I would have happily seconded as well. I think that, yeah, I think that if there's a way that we could, I don't think it's really an amendment to what you had said, but to encourage a discussion with the city before you come to the city council to see whether there's something that you want to, whether you want to codify. But I think the recommendation, at least the recommendation that's on the table here really is, that is not something that we're intending to be bonding at this point. But I hope that, hopefully we can pick that up. Any other comments? I had a few comments before we vote. If, so I was just going to say, you know, I was on the planning commission at the time when we did the first approval of this hotel. Was I? Maybe I wasn't. Maybe I was just off at that point. You know, I would definitely, you know, I thank the applicant. They really pushed very, very hard to, you know, we have a general plan. We impose limits and recommendations. This was compliant in every way. Even when, I think, you know, when you look at the opportunity for transient occupancy tax across the street from the biggest office building on the West Coast, you know, I think there were a lot of people who said, you know, if you really need it, would you like to build it a little taller, make it a little bit bigger or have a little bit less setback? But I think there was real dedication on the part of the project team to kind of say, hey, we want to live in the envelope. We want to make this happen. You know, so I hope that this, I hope that you're able to do this and, you know, that this extension can be meaningful for making this, making this project happen.
Yeah, I just want to second what Chair Fung said. I'm impressed with how diligently and how carefully you guys thoughtfully developed this plan. I mean, it makes our lives so much easier and it makes you guys really great partners for us to work with. And we very much appreciate that. So thank you.
Anything else? No, if not, then let's vote with our lights. Good, motion passes.
Motion carries for yes and one absent on the pile.
Great, thank you very much. All right, let's move to the next item, which is very similar. All right, let's move to the next item, which is very similar. Read the right part here. Item three on our agenda is an amendment to a development agreement for the Deanza Hotel Project and associated environmental review. This is application DA twenty twenty three oh oh three. The applicant is Deanza Properties, John Vidovic. Location ten nine three one North Deanza Boulevard, A P N three two six oh one oh six one. Oh, yes, yeah, oh. One oh, yes, three two six, one oh, oh six one. I guess, I I think everybody actually commented already, but if there was any ex parte communication on this one with the with. The Deanza Hotel team. It's probably, it's probably good, just a quick repeat.
So I had a conversation, a phone conversation with Claudio Bono, representative for Vidovic.
I had no conversations with the Hotel Deanza applicant.
And I had a conversation with John Vidovic.
I had reached out to Claudio Bono, but we didn't end up having a discussion. Great, with that, let's go to the staff report.
Well, Chair, as you noted, the two applications are very similar and John is here tonight to give you a staff presentation on it.
Thanks, Pew, and good evening again and hope you don't suffer from too much deja vu going through this. So again, yes, very similar and, you know, when the cities approach with the this applicant. There was insurance of of equity between the two applications as well when negotiating this. So a quick background, the current site, why did my picture go? The current site is. Was there before? Go to your entire site on North Deanza. It was approved on March third, twenty twenty at City Council to approve a hundred fifty five room hotel. April twenty first, twenty twenty, the City Council conducted a second reading to adopt the development agreement. Twenty eighteen oh one ordinance twenty dash twenty one nine five. The agreement became effective almost immediately on April twenty first, twenty twenty. The five year term ends April twenty first, twenty twenty five. Similar to the last DA vested development standards as of the effective date of the of the DA. It with updated building codes applying as similar with the last development agreement. The community agreement with the the benefits for this development agreement included a community amenity funding of five hundred thousand dollars. Shell service for guests and residents. The residents would have to pay a nominal fee to use it to get to their destination to job centers as well as local airports. Meeting rooms are available for similar to the last hotel for 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 city business in the school districts. But however, in this case, would only be for, I believe, twelve, twelve days out of the year with the reduced cost for catering as well. The major difference with this application is a rooftop amenity. This this hotel was was required to have a rooftop bar lounge restaurant at the top enclosed, fully enclosed. With a with a rooftop deck as well, open to the public whenever operational. Similar minimum hotel standard of upper upscale according to Smith Travel Research. Again, the request not to exhaust the planning commission's time, essentially the same, the same amendments and requests as as the last hotel. Environmental assessment in accordance with mitigated negative declaration, SEQA guidelines, section one five one six two. The recommended actions that staff recommends the planning commission adopted draft resolution recommending that the city council. One, find the extension of the development agreement consistent with the project's mitigated negative declaration. And two, approve the development agreement as amended DA twenty twenty three dash zero zero three. Next steps is planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to City Council on April third of this year for a first reading. While the second reading is tentatively scheduled for April sixteenth. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Is there a applicant presentation?
He, no presentation, but I I believe he's remote out of the country, but he should be on. Claudio Bono.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, good evening, Chair Feng and Commissioners and staff. My name is Claudio Bono, Cupertino resident, and tonight I will speak on my behalf, myself as an operator, as a Cupertino resident. But also on behalf of Deanza Properties and John Vidovic. And I'm a hotel operator, so would like to thank the staff. For their wonderful report that was well prepared and like to reiterate and echo some of the following information that I did find on the staff. Report that obviously says that we're in accordance with the mitigated negative declaration. There is no further environmental review necessary under SEQA guidelines as well. There is no substantial changes to the project and no substantial changes in circumstances as well. I'd like to recommend the planning commission to recommend City Council to find the amendment consistent. With the project mitigating negative declaration and approve the amendment to the existing development agreement DA dash two zero one eight. Dash oh one and to adopt the draft. And I found that also that the mitigating negative declaration, the M and D, only mitigated for nesting, not bird collision with windows. But while the city cannot enforce that, obviously, this is not our first rodeo. We have the Cupertino Hotel and next month will be ten years that I am the temporary custodian of it. And do my very best to bring as many dollars T O T taxes to the city of Cupertino. We're committed to build and our aim is to build as we stated. And that's going to generate about a one point five average yearly T O T taxes or fifteen million in ten years. And wanted to also. Say that obviously that hotel will also tremendously help all the businesses located surrounding in that specific plaza, the Safeway. The Gulf Store, the FedEx, so it will ultimately help the other businesses and to get more revenue as well. So as a Cupertino resident, I want my city to thrive and obviously this business will bring very good money to the city. And so we'll do whatever it takes to create and to maintain this a legacy in Cupertino. And John Vidovic is also known to have a lead gold building and will do. Another good legacy in Cupertino as far as building is concerned. So thank you for your time and hopefully I would love for you to adopt the draft and the recommendation to City Council. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, let's bring it back up here for any questions, clarifying questions for the staff report or for the applicant.
I would just like the same thing that we did for this project regarding the recommendation that SEMA made for Dark Skies and Bird Safe. To request that Deanza Properties do the same thing. Claudio, are you still there or not?
Yes, I am here, Commissioner Scharf.
So do you think John would agree to making the building Bird Safe and Dark Skies compliant?
Are you enjoying putting me in the position? I'm a hotel operator and not a builder. But I, but again, John Vidovic is well known to build wonderful buildings and recently got the gold award as well for lead. For one of his buildings, so obviously the intent is there and we want to meet the intent and obviously we'll do whatever is necessary. But while I'm the operator and as a Cupertino resident, I want that hotel built, they get a safety so that the city. And our guests can enjoy our city as well. Obviously, we will refer to Mr. Vidovic for final say.
Okay, very diplomatic, thank you.
Just one question on what was the zoning like height restrictions for that plot prior to this project being approved?
So the the zoning in general plan designation did not change. Really was the the standards specifically for this parcel. So if you're asking for the height, the height limitation is forty five feet for this parcel.
Yeah.
And so the height for this hotel, I believe, is about eighty five feet.
Yeah.
Right, so there was a general plan amendment for.
Yeah.
For height and for setback.
And for setbacks as well.
The setback was, actually, I think that was relaxed in the last design, right?
Yeah, so there's, there's three general plan amendments that went, it was the the hotel room allocation, similar to the prior applicant. Height and daylight plane, which is the one to one or forty five degree angle from the curb line.
Got it. Is it, did they have any minimum parking restrictions that they didn't meet either?
They met all parking, all parking standards. Every other standard was met.
Okay.
Except for those three.
Got it.
Yeah, I know we can't go back to that, but I guess I'm curious as to why we gave them such a tall building when everything around them is three story high.
Council made the findings.
Right, I mean, I was, you know, on the council then, I think we felt that the surrounding buildings, the avier across the street. And would not be affected by the extra height. Or the shopping center or John Vidovic's other hotel, you know, Cupertino Hotel or Cupertino Inn as it was known at the time. And the condos behind that. I think we we wanted the extra revenue from for more T O T from the additional rooms. And we really wanted that, the rooftop amenity, the the bar. I think that's one reason he was able to negotiate the lower amenity cost. The lower amenity fees was because he agreed to do that rooftop bar. I don't think yours is a, I don't know if it was there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they have a rooftop too.
But it's not, not the same. I think they have a rooftop area, but it's not like a full restaurant and bar. I could be wrong, I don't know. Anyway.
Okay, yeah, it certainly seems like John Vidovic negotiated a better deal.
Yeah, it's possible, yeah.
I mean, you know, that, I think that, you know, that at the time, it was interesting for historical context. I mean, we were using a new kind of gateway approval procedure for general plan amendments. And so I I think that the way that that was structured. Hotels are were probably more attractive than some of the other things that were being, they were going through that process at the time. That may have been part of it as well. I think that it was very clear at a time when people were concerned about things like. The residential pact, residential development impact on schools, that hotels don't, don't have that with. While while generating a lot of revenue for the city. Do we, if there are no other comments, I think perhaps we ought to try to have a motion. Oh, oh, excuse me.
Yes, comment.
Yeah, pardon me. Yes, we have a public comment as well. The here in community hall, we have a card from Jennifer Griffin. My apologies, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Yes, I remember those days well, especially with the hotel. My, I I think that this product has turned out to be a very, very lovely looking hotel. It's had several iterations, but I think that, in fact, I I saw the pictures again with John this week. And I, it is extremely striking. It is avant garde looking, but it it fits the area. It kind of looks Eichlerish, which I think is pretty cool. And it's also across from one of the Apple campuses, the first Apple campus. And I think that the hotel. Will become a really, really amazing complement to Cupertino. We want to have good construction. We want to have, I mean, it's Cupertino. We don't want to have things that are ugly, that are poorly built, that are not thought out. We want to have sites that are going to attract people to come and stay in them. We we have Apple and the the legacy. Electronic and computer companies in Cupertino. No other city has a history like Cupertino. And you have tourists coming. I mean, we've got, you go down Tanta by it by where the new Apple campus is. There are tourists there seven days a week, twenty four hours a day. We see them taking pictures, they're getting off of buses. And it's not just the electronics market. You have people coming in from other countries that want to see Cupertino, the legacy of Steve Jobs, the legacy of Hewlett Packard. It it's, it's unique in the history of California. And therefore, the products that we deliver for these people to see and stay in need to be above any level of building. And I I see this, I'm so proud of Cupertino when we have products like this. I'm proud to live in this city when we can offer things like this to the people of the world. And I hope that this hotel will be built. It has a lot of sensitivity, it had a lot of issues, but I'm very pleased with the design that they came up with. And I I think that this Deanza Boulevard is one of the main crossroads of Cupertino. And I think this hotel, when it will be built, will become a real gemstone, just like the other hotel that was just. Talked about previously, thank you.
Thank you. And now let's go to the online speakers.
First speaker is Connie Cunningham.
Good evening again, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, I want to, this is Connie Cunningham. I am on the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I wanted to thank very much the Planning Commission for their recommendation to follow Bird Safe and Dark Skies ordinance for Agenda Item Two. The ordinance was negotiated among the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society and city staff. It was discussed for the year leading up to January twenty twenty one when it was approved. This, the Deanza Hotel shows that it was approved very, very shortly before that. Since the city chamber of commerce was so much involved in the negotiations, it really is kind of hard to believe that they were not involved. And that they did not carry away with them some of the agreement that the Chamber of Commerce had brought to the ordinance. I was particularly interested in your talking about that it could be negotiated and that's true. That wasn't, the whole thing was negotiated and businesses each have their own things they need to achieve. We do want to have hotels of this, of this magnitude, mag, whatever, in our city. Some very simple ones, lights off when not in use. Eleven P M is preferred. Now, you do have an upstairs thing, right? So you have to pay attention to migrating birds. If you can get the lights off at eleven, that's fine, but if you've got people up there drinking and stuff until two, well, then that's one of the things that can happen. No uplighting, that is something that's very detrimental to even birds down below on the trees and stuff. They need to sleep, guys, they need to sleep. Kelvin twenty five hundred, the warmth of the light is preferred. The Bird Safe calls for Kelvin three thousand, that was negotiated with the Chamber of Commerce. Twenty five hundred or less is preferred, Kelvin three thousand is what's in the Bird Safe Dark Skies ordinance. Glass corners are the worst. Mirrored windows are worst of all. Avoid those things, please, when you're looking at this bird going ahead. Glass bridges are a problem if that applies to this particular project. I won't reiterate about the millions of birds who are dying, but they are. And we should pay attention to our environment. So I want to thank the Planning Commission again for their stand to take this forward to the city council. And to ask these fine companies with all the work they are doing for our city. To please take this additional step to guide us into the future and be with us there. Thank you again, good night.
Thank you, Connie. Next is Lisa. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, so I repeat the thanks for the discussion about Bird Safe and Dark Sky. And I see. And I see absolutely no reason not to consider the same motion and pass it to go to council for this hotel. In some ways, I think this project needs it more. I'm not a fan that the height was increased and the setback was decreased. Yes, it's in a different setting in the city, but those things are not something that I care for. But it's gonna happen and there were improvements made along the way when those concessions were given. So that is what it is, but once again, I will have less respect for John and friends if they don't take the step to match the current ordinances for bird safe and dark sky. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Chair.
Thank you. So we can bring back and again, any comments or we could entertain a motion?
Can we ask you to read back how we wrote the motion for the prior applicant so we could essentially copy?
I think John recorded it, but my understanding is that the Planning Commission recommends that the applicant consider complying with the bird safe and dark sky requirements ordinance.
I don't know that I put consider in there.
The Planning Commission recommends that the applicant incorporate another, as a condition of approval to bird safe and dark sky ordinance requirements.
Right. So that we, we add a modification to the amendments. Correct. Oh, okay. I'll make the motion. The Planning Commission recommends that the City Council find the amendment to the development agreement consistent with the project's mitigated negative declaration and approve the amendment to the existing development agreement with the added modification that they comply with the dark skies bird safe ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I was only just going to comment if, if I could on this one. I think that this one had a lot more cycles, a lot more discussion, a lot more community discussion. I think that they did actually get to a good, a good result and I think that that, once again, I would say, you know, I commend the applicant for, you know, hearing the voice of the people in, in the project that they brought forward. And then I hope it gets built. And with that, if anybody else would like to comment? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries. It's four yes and monopila absent.
Great. Thank you. All right, we have a few more items here. I don't believe there's any old business, but is there?
No old business, Chair.
Yes, and new business?
No new business, Chair.
Right. And then are there any staff or commission reports?
There are none at this time.
Great. Commissioners, any, any reports? All right.
Chair, if I may ask you a quick question, there were two public hearing items that, that are being recommended for council's consideration. And so there has to be a representative from the commission that needs to attend the meeting and represent the commission's position. Would you like to ask that question of the commissioners to see who might be able to attend? I believe the meeting will be held on April 3rd.
This is for this agenda?
The two DA modifications, yes.
I don't, I don't think there's any issue for me to attend, but if anybody else wants to as well.
We'll pencil you down for that date.
Great. All right. The next item on the agenda is future agenda setting. Are there any items that people want to raise at this time? All right. Well, with that, then we are concluded. That was three in a row. It is 7:59. Thank you very much and we adjourn this meeting.